Derek, did you drop it from New Mexico? Or how bad a drive is that?
Long.
Okay. You go well, about like ten to twenty?
Well, uh.
Two ninety?
Yeah, we started from two ninety.
Yeah.
We'll take the roll call. Chair first and I are down. Yes, here. Member Terry, running with that.
Yes.
Member Nancy Goddington.
Yes.
Member Jacob.
Here.
Member Dorothy.
Here.
And man, four member man who's been.
Okay. I believe this is the third point of the achievements.
I can check on it.
It was in the middle. Well. Um, no public comments?
No, ma'am.
All right, so we'll approve the minutes from February thirteenth.
The next motion to approve.
Okay. We need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'll let you down on that, ma'am. So we can send counter those new motions to the left.
You taking the next recording of this?
Mm-hmm. Ma'am.
So it's on the record.
I was just in the class, but never mind.
I don't have a three minute. It's not delayed by seven seconds. Please remain all.
So we had a rushing and we had a second, so now we need to approve it.
I'm sorry, so.
I'm just following my.
Do we have like two main arrangements? We did. I mean, second one.
Here.
We're actually going to accept the minutes. Both set or?
I thought.
But it can send agenda. It's simple agenda.
We actually accepted that again.
Yeah, I'll add that to your thing.
Thank you.
I'll send you that one.
You ready?
All right.
You vote?
Oh, yes.
Chair Allen.
Yes.
Member Terry.
Yes.
Is it Bernie who said his last name? Right?
Well.
Or is it Terry Bernie and then he said his last name?
Whatever you choose on clients that are already. The legally it's Bernie, this is. Um, it's.
That's what I wanted to make.
People writing when I was writing for them.
I can make sure it's correct.
Absolutely.
Member Tyler. You said the minutes.
That's me.
Yes. And member McElroy.
Yes.
And member Casey.
So did we just approve them?
Yes, ma'am.
I found a mistake.
Okay.
So can we just?
We can take a proof of edit. People, uh, somebody made the amendments to prove the edits.
All right, so the legal was February thirteenth.
Uh-huh.
Um. March, go through. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm March or April. All right, so, um. So. So there was an item, okay, it was on March thirteenth. And it was, um, seven, discuss and take possible action requesting the city meeting with Carl Blocki. Um, I did not see which Carl Blocki. That's the first line. It was actually Dorothy Catherine.
All right.
That's open.
All right, yeah.
That day. And I did attend. And I told her I appreciate her hands on approach and so.
I will write it.
You did. That's so. Wanting to clear.
Oh, right. Oh, yeah, you can't, sorry, come back.
Oh. Okay.
So March, until you approve the edit, until we're first.
Okay. I need to make sure I approve. Nice afternoon. Thank you.
Member Brian Desa.
Yes.
Member Kyle.
Yes.
Member McElroy.
Yes.
Member Casey.
Yes.
And Chair Robb.
Yes.
Yes, moving on along with move to report. Some officers and council liaison. My first line would be.
Yes, uh, it's family. Not a lot to report. Um, you talked about what's happened in the past. Pro of going forward, there's a couple of things the council will be working on on Wednesday. Uh, we're going to be probably changing the, uh, or tweaking the tree trimming applications just a little bit. Um, I mean, I don't know exactly what we're doing. I have to look at the, uh, the agenda, but you know, that's something that we worked on. And, uh, there's going to be just a little adjustment. I don't think it's any big deal. Um, also, we're going to be looking at maybe editing the, uh, the Oakwell assistance application. Uh, to just basically make make it clear that there's budgeted funds that we're operating off of instead of, uh, uh, available funds, just minor things. But other than that, those are going to be completely finalized and we thank you for your for your work on that.
Thank you. So.
Hello, two things. Uh, I know that one of the items is the, um, birthday, but I want to let you know what other, um, activities are going around in the city. Before y'all discuss that and you can add yours to the list. I know the Parks Department, they will be down at Augusta Park trimming, uh, trees that have fallen in the ice storm and cleaning up that area. Um, towards Augusta Lane. Um, so they'll be out there cleaning up. Um, Mayor Roscoe with individuals from Aqua will be here, I believe, also, um. Assisting, I think down at Ventures Park in that area next to there, cleaning up the trees as well. Um, that may change. Uh, we will. Be meeting at eight thirty, I believe. And for those who want to, um, eight thirty at the Triangle. And those groups will be dispersing to their areas. Um, they will be returning at one o'clock or somewhere around there. I'm going to be cooking hot dogs and have some chips and some drinks. So afterwards, after everybody gets done doing their Earth Day activity, they can swing by the Triangle and grab a hot dog and a drink. And we will take over their participation. For those that can't, we encourage y'all to stay at home, do it by your yard, lawn, plant a little flower, uh, do something, uh, like that. And of course you'll have yours that I'll let you discuss here briefly. Um, the second thing that I have is the request for proposals for the certified arborists. If you remember correctly, um, it came through the Tree Board, it went through council, we got approved in the ice storm. Yeah. So we are going to, uh, put that out. Um, we're going to put it on our website and we're going to look at the, uh, vendors that are arborists that have done work in the city. Similar to the list that we use to get tree companies to help us in our right of way during the ice storm. Um, and we'll just send them a letter saying, hey, it's up on our website. If you wish to reply, please go to our website and fill out the RFP and send it back in. Uh, my thought is that we would receive those and then in June, just because of some conflicting stuff, I won't be here. Uh, but in June, uh, we will bring probably depends on how many we get, but two or three to this board. And let you all, uh, interview those people. Uh, so you can ask them whatever question and then we would make a recommendation to council. That would go on to the next council meeting for, um, City Council to consider. If that is okay with y'all. And then, um, we will do it that way. So. That is all I have.
Okay, so, um, yeah, it's something.
Sure.
It seems like for this will be the with items we did to the map. And we'd be hopeful that we have, well, I think it's in our tree board book. The R, the RFP. That we work with.
I don't know if it was, I'll, I'll send you all a copy or I'll send you a copy and you can distribute it. Um, there's a couple of things like we need to put in the date, the proposals need to be in and so forth and so on. So just some dates in there that that weren't put into the original one. Um, and it needs to be just formatted a little bit that I'll do so it looks nice.
Thank you.
I won't be changing, I don't leave any words on or anything. I'll just be, um, updating the dates and formatting it to look a little prettier. Put it out of actual, um, city letterhead, make it more official. And then I'll send that to them. And then it will be on the website posted this week.
Wonderful. Um, we will, I'll make that an agenda item. You really don't need to add that.
We don't, we really don't need it to do the item, not until June. And then we'll, we'll make sure that I'll coordinate with you and make sure that we get it out and do the interviews of the, um, tree arborists. And we'll list the tree arborists that will be coming in.
Okay, so June is.
Correct.
Good, so. We'll look at that in the future as an agenda item to prepare for interviews and who's going to do that. And what kinds of questions to ask, or if we're using the. This may not be the time, but I find to thank the two of you especially for what you did to coordinate the pickup of the limbs. That was such a tremendous job that I know.
That's a compliment, we'll take it in any part.
But if it was, I can imagine, uh, just in doing our own processes, let alone coordinating.
And I will, and if y'all have a chance, I will be doing a short. Promising brand. A short presentation on the whole process of, um, the ice storm and coordination with all the different entities that we've worked with. Um, and preventing the timeline and just some facts, so let's hopefully no more than five minutes. But if y'all want to watch it on Wednesday night or after Wednesday night, um, I would encourage you to do it. It's just, it's just, um, a lot of work, a short, short.
Yeah.
Twenty nine days.
That all of twenty nine days?
Well, no.
Well, with us, that was ways connection. With us, it's probably a weekend before that.
Yeah, I remember, uh, like the day, I mean, when we first got out, sort of cutting the limbs and everything and we had a meeting in here and we were all kind of stunned, like, what are we going to do?
Yeah.
You guys figured it out, man. It's a real, I mean, people are really happy, so.
Yeah, we were recap that and I have a couple of suggestions.
We're thinking.
I'm just curious, a huge pile on Wood Creek Drive, and I don't know if it's.
That is awkward.
We're working with them.
Oh, that's awful.
Yes, that is awkward, we have been in contact with them, so. We're aware of it and we received, um, phone calls and we're working on getting that cleaned up.
They've made a lot of progress, you know, but they still get that big pile to go. But on, on the course itself, it's a lot better.
Yeah, the course is great, it's just all.
Yeah.
Well, I live on, it used to be the thirteenth airway, don't ask me what that is. But, um, anyway, there's been a couple of things that have fallen off the tree that have been there forever.
Yeah.
And then you keep mowing around it. Instead of, you know, it's not that they don't have, uh, the equipment to pick up this limb.
Look at that mutant behind us. Did any of that get picked up? I don't know.
Sorry.
That mutant behind us, did those things get picked up?
Uh, and that little island there? No, we have not. Um, and, um, that, that may be something I need to talk to him about. That pile's been there, it's just gotten bigger, but it, it's always been there. I, uh, I almost don't like them coming back there because then they want to cut everything down and I don't know. Maybe it's kind of, sometimes it's better to leave alone.
I don't have to look at it.
Yeah, oh, you can see it where you're at?
No, I don't.
I see when I walk through there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on it, you know, if it gets to be annoying, I'll, we'll get in the rain.
Oh, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, so, um, can you just let me in here a little bit? Because there was a lot of damage at the ice storm. And there are other things that have happened that have just been pushed aside, like oak wilt. And, um, there are dead trees. Jacob, you know more than I do, there are other things that need to be addressed very quickly. How do we do those before June?
Well, June, in effect, there is.
Yeah, we have already discussed in number five now, updating the tree survey and post ice storm.
Well, I was kind of doing a.
You're kind of, how do we get to there? So we're on, we're on number five, we're kind of doing the post ice storm twenty-three, which goes into that. So I just want to make sure everybody along the, you are great, just keep on.
All right, so, so we'll be waiting for the, uh, for June to have some candidates.
Correct.
To do any of the work.
Correct.
And so what do we do about oak wilt now? I think there's a hot zone.
Well, you gotta, you gotta take, uh, work on stuff that's on your agenda. And the, the, your agenda is starting about updating the tree survey, uh, the Earth Day, uh, citywide meeting with Carl Blocki, that's an oak wilt issue. Um, and then the Open Tree Board position. Um, so we don't have specific with oak wilt on the agenda, but you could talk about five, six, seven, and eight, and I'm going to segue into that.
Okay, so I was just said, wait, wait. And then you took that.
Pretty good, you're going to get three, man.
About city arborists.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, and it goes with the, the post ice storm.
Yeah.
Discuss, right, it is a great segue. Uh, yeah, I mean, until we get an arborist on board, yes, we're going to wait. Uh, now, the oak trees can't be cut or trimmed right now anyway. We, we reinstated the, the tree permit. So, and then I believe with Carl Blocki also said that those trees that were damaged, they started healing themselves. He was not worried, too worried, um, I'll put that in context about that, just because of the, when it happened, it was still cold, the, the buds were not out, so on and so forth. You know, probably butcher it totally as well as he can say it, but. So, you know, unless you have to, we're recommending waiting on trimming of the oak trees until, um, after June thirtieth. When the, when the, you know, the vehicles or whatever and, uh, restriction comes off of trimming the oak trees. So that would actually be a great time if we, if they come arborist in June, we get them on the Jodai and they can hit the ground running.
Okay, so before I segue on the number five, will there be a list of details that we need to be addressing and city addresses?
Um, that in your RFP, that's what the arborist does. He comes up with all of that and reports back to you and tells you trouble trees and he does the survey for the trees and all of that. That's part of the, um, the scope of the, of the services. Cause they're going to create and distribute a document that lists tree care and management practice that would be used. Um, they'll initiate, he or she will initiate, supervise, and manage healthy tree service operations.
So even though we're hoping that starts in June, we're still in the interview process.
That's why I'm saying July, hopefully we'll have one in here.
So before I segue in the number five about, um, a tree survey and how important it is to take information down about what is happening or has happened to our trees. Um, and before we can make a motion on something that's not on the agenda. Please start making a list of things that you see as board numbers that need to be addressed. So that when we do fire somebody, we can make a motion to get those items.
Right, I have to check those out first, exactly.
Great, that was, that was my segue. Jacob, anything else you want to add?
I think you hit the nail on the head and, uh, anything that didn't get talked about this time will get talked about next month.
Perfect. Okay, so number five, if there are no more discussion. Discuss and take possible action on updating the tree survey post ice storm of two thousand twenty-three. So Sudan was able to find the inventory that we did. And so, um, and I thought it would be nice to compare, but at the same time, some of these trees may be gone. So it's, it's a bit like starting over, but it'd be nice to compare once we get our, this, you know, this inventory. And so. We also have a map of the city that the areas are.
It's probably in our green book, I bet, too.
It's where?
In, in our green notebook.
On.
Yeah, I didn't see it in there.
It's not in there?
No.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so.
It's down today.
And so this one was the one that was left over. And I'm trying to make a copy of it, but memory is weak, you know, doesn't help very much. Um, by using magnifying glass to look at this anyway. But this is what we're working with, but what we do have, and this passes around if you'd like, what we do have. Is, um. I did that. Here it is. I made, I took the inventory that was up in two thousand twenty-two. And, um, looked at the areas that were actually addressed by the, by the tree board at that time. Does anybody remember who was on the tree? This was in July of less, less, Monica, myself, pardon, Monica, Bresko, Monica, me, you.
Cynthia.
Yeah.
And you.
I, I was barely here. That's what I hear.
I'm a bit tired of them.
For your first look, man.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Got another one coming.
So you are here.
Yeah. It'll be July.
Jacob is here. I was here. Cynthia. And Monica. All right, so.
Take away the.
All right, so, um, you, we need three different groups to go through and inventory these trees. And I, I guess the question is, are the trees, is it safe to go and measure trees now? I still have limbs that are free by. Just yet. Okay, um, then I'm wondering how to move with this? I'm wondering, I mean, they're, we're not gonna, I don't think this is a time to create a committee when we're, when we have all the information we need to get started. Except. What we do need is, um, tools for how to measure the diameter of the trees. And I'm looking at you, Jacob, because I was hoping you could have some information and maybe a, um, a bullet point guide on what to look for in a tree. Um, whether it's healthy or not, or what we would actually list on the inventory. And here, I remember we would put things like single trunk, uh, double trunk, triple trunk in a cluster, crowded canopies. Um, uh, holes in the tree or bug damage. We didn't see any oak wilt, unfortunately. But if you would consider doing that, you could maybe file a motion to get that information from you so that we can prepare to do this.
For sure, I mean, like all the things you listed, defects, uh, location, uh, singles, single trunk or multi trunk. Um, the, these are all things that you take into, in, take into consideration when putting together an inventory. Um, it's kind of hard to imagine where these trees are on an Excel spreadsheet. So what I like to do is get them on a map in ten points. And, um. Just like that. So I have a software and I would be willing to let the tree board use the software. Um, everyone can log in from their browser for any, from any kind of device, whether it's an iPhone or Android. Um, and it has all the, it has this whole list on there, what to look for and how you can, um, categorize it.
Can we simplify that?
It gets, that's about as simple as it gets.
I was hoping Jacob.
Forget it all.
Yeah.
Let's do it all. Oh, you're circling the lines. Two months of inventory over two thousand three.
So, but definitely you could probably just think and, uh, if somebody.
We could get it done pretty quick. I mean, as long as we're sticking to city property. And of course, you know, I have the, the tools to measure diameter of high, high table, Baltimore sticks. Um, which are just different ways you can measure the diameter. And then, of course, the, the software does the calculations for multi trunk trees. Um, so you don't have to sit down with a pen and paper for an extra two agreements.
Okay. Yeah.
Um, if we're hiring, if the city is hiring an arborist. What do, what do they do if we're doing all this work?
Those are.
It's a wall, yeah. Now, I noticed down there that there was, um, a net sheet that just went around, that was seven, uh, twenty and seven twenty-one, which would have been July, what?
No, it was twenty-four.
I don't know, I don't remember, what did it say?
A lot of forty-three.
Mm-hmm. Last year, or twenty twenty-two?
I, I put it here, this is from two thousand twenty-two.
Oh, okay, so two thousand twenty-two is.
This is in the inventory tab.
Okay, okay, I guess, you know, my concern is that you're hiring and paying somebody to do the work, then why are we doing more?
It's a submission, isn't it? People.
Yeah, well, I don't know about that, 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 that falls under the, you know, my opinion, that falls under the, um, of the experts, okay? Um, we have knowledge, but we don't, we're not the ones that are supposed to be expert. That's all I say about you.
But I think maybe what Nancy's saying is that, uh, since we did the last one in July, we, we may be able to, you know, because of all the ruckus we've gone through, just do the survey again in July when we have it. An arborist and, and, you know, he can at least help us along with Jacob in terms of saying, here's what you need to do. And then, you know, we break up into different quadrants and go get it done, you know? Instead of us trying to learn it from the ground up, it, it might be easier, you know, to utilize that, that, um, arborist when he comes on board to help us get started on it, along with Jacob. Those are my thoughts.
That's what I thought, since we already have a listing, um, in there.
That's what I thought, since we already have a listing inventory. That once we have an arborist, then they'll have that to work with to go out and actually be hands-on with what we.
Okay, so I agree with that. There are several points here, though, that. So part of our designation as a tree city USA is to have a tree board. And part of our mission was to get an inventory. So we are responsible for the inventory and we're also responsible for the welfare and the care of the trees. Doesn't mean we do all the work. It means that we, we delegate. And what you're suggesting, we delegate to an expert. But at the same time, we need an expert who can start the work that has already been reported that wasn't dealt with in nine months, right? So I'm not adverse to delegating to an expert. I just know that we're gonna create a list of things that need to be addressed. And as a board and with that mission, especially with hotspots of oak wilt around the city, might be good to do some of this. Now, I'm not saying we need to do it all. I'm just saying we need to be prepared to support the arborists who does come in, whether it's June or July, suspected of July.
I guess maybe we could do, but certainly oversee a little bit of what we did last year and to see if there are trees missing. I don't feel comfortable with saying the tree is dead because I'm not an expert, but we could certainly, yeah, count trees and see if there are two limbs or, you know, one limb. Because the arborist is also going to be an expensive person that, you know, even though he keeps giving us, say, ten hours' length, it's gonna take quite a bit to, to go and do all that if he's starting from scratch. So I think it's good if it's in here, you know, hey, I was just going to say a little bit about what to do.
So that's, a lot of this, that's a, on page four. There's, there's one on this page that says good. And none of the others have any comments. There's one here that says, dead.
That's about our expertise.
Right.
I agree, I'm not an expert. And that's why I was asking Jacob about some sort of bullet boards to help us identify, along with the brochure about oak wilt, so we'd have some way of identifying. Now, the central section did healthy split trunk, healthy split trunk. Here's one, I think I did, that almost dead. I remember a lot of this, mostly dead. Unhealthy, crowded, you know, so we need to look at this stuff. Not that we can, I, I think there are some, we can look at a tree and say, that's dead, or that's dying. And, and help identify where they are, but that is an inventory. A pre-inventory, when it's safe to do, yes.
Let me ask Jacob, were you involved the last inventory?
No, I didn't get to, I didn't tag any trees.
Okay, okay, got you. Who, was it Monica that did most of the, I mean, how did we do this the last time? Cause I didn't, I wasn't.
Broke into groups, all broken into groups. I guess two separate groups.
No, there's south, central, and north. And each of these, each of these, like, south is City Hall, Branchilla Twelve, Edward Creek, and Champion Circle, so that's some standing trees on the corner, and then across the street is Veterans Memorial.
Okay.
It's very specific.
Yeah.
Where the trees are.
Who, who told us how to, what, what to do and what to look for?
Nobody.
Nobody? Well, then how did, how did y'all know what to do? You just kind of winged it, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so you worked on it and, and did anyone tell you what to look for, what to do, or how did y'all know?
Yeah, we kind of looked at the trees and then what was, and then that, you know, were in poor shade. And we just, I noticed it, but it was basically counting how many oak trees were in that section.
And this was in, in the park and on the right of way?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not a whole neighborhood?
No, it's just the areas.
Okay, it's different, you told it last time, I'll look it down a little more.
So it was, all the key areas, like in North area was Emrock, Met Brook, Naredo, La Roca, Country Cul-de-sac, and Crest Park.
So do you guys want to start kind of doing now, or do you want to wait until we get the arborist on board? He can kind of help us, you know, give us some guidance along with Jacob in terms of what we're supposed to do and how we do a proper inventory, or do we want to try to figure out now and get started? What do y'all want to do?
Well, we have an inventory, so we know what trees we have.
Why aren't trees being had?
Well, true, but, you know, at least you would know where to look for a good tree. But we have an inventory, so why couldn't we wait till we have an arborist to inventory again? Their work is well.
Yeah, I, I, my biggest concern probably is oak wilt. Because we don't know what happened during the ice storm of oak wilt and who was doing what. And whether it's spreading and if oak wilted trees were cut. And we don't, we just don't know what's happened. Now, I, it's just on the agenda, folks, it's something we're supposed to do annually, I think, to keep up with the health of our trees.
What I, I think what I'm hearing from you, you know, is that, I think there's consensus that we want to, we want to do a tree survey or update it. The last one was done in, in July. We, we're hoping an arborist will be on board about that time and then maybe consult with him, get some guidance on, on, you know, how to do this properly and, you know, and then along with Jacob and then get it done, you know, later, later in the year. And I think that's okay, since we, we got our head knocked off with this ice storm. I get it, what about the oak wilt, but I, you know, I don't know if we can really do anything about that right now. But I think that's a consensus, but you guys need to decide and then someone make a motion and then, and, you know, go from there.
So what would that motion be?
I, I didn't make a motion, but y'all need to make a motion.
Make a motion to, to lay anything that needs to be reined, so we have an arborist on board. Because I mean, we can't do it, just so, we, but we have someone to consult with. So, is that?
That's a good question.
I make a motion that we do a tree inventory in July, once we have an arborist on staff to consult with.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it. You okay with that?
You can make a motion in that second, additional discussion.
May I, yes, Jacob, if a, a tree right now is identified with oak wilt, what is the process? Is that?
So are you, like a, like a city-owned tree? So there would be a, I would make a suggestion to go ahead and treat the trees in the surrounding areas that the city owns with the fungicide. Possible trenching could be a, a, a realistic thing, the removal of the oak wilt tree. That way we can stop the spread of it. That's what I would suggest.
Is there, within two months' time, there could be a lot of healthy wood damage through a big tree?
Oak wilt can travel pretty fast. I mean, it can kill a single tree in just a couple of months and it can spread even quicker than that.
Just go down, what is it, across the, off of Brook Hollow.
You can pick almost any road in Wood Creek and find oak wilt.
But I have some roads that are, that I took way back, probably in two thousand eight. And with the, the red oats, they have a hundred percent mortality rate, you know?
They can, they're the, the highest spreader, too. They have this format under the guard.
And, and I think that, you know, you're gonna do, that's one thing that I have, that I think should happen within the survey is to identify what's a red oak, what's a live, you know, live oak would be, and then one that would be sap bed. And I think that's quite a, easy, uh, you know, here or something. So treading down, trenching on live oats is sixty-five percent.
And it should be done almost every five years.
Yeah. So we personally did Wood Creek, and that's back in two thousand six. They had just done trenching in some area, which, you know, even if it's on, let's say, city property, if it's close to somebody's own property, they're likely to get upset about that, you know?
It's, it's a hard thing to do, because, I mean.
It's really very tricky.
So right now.
Approaching on critical root zones or.
Yeah, because that's not triangles.
And right now, one of the hotspots is over by Stone House, right?
Uh, yeah.
And the triangle where we're having hot dogs on Thursday. So I, I think what I would like to do and, and what, in my view, I think it would be wise to do a mini zip survey where we just go to these areas and not measure all the trees, but look specifically for dead and oak wilted trees or in the area so that we can identify them and then bring it to Kevin Rule to decide what we're going to do with those trees as soon as possible. I'm, I'm anxious about, I'm just anxious anyway, I think, but anxious about waiting until July to start working with oak wilt. I, I, I think I told you folks, I went to a, a nursery on the other side of Marble Falls. And for miles, miles, there were dead oak trees. It was the most painful trip to a greenhouse nursery that it ever had. And I can't imagine anything here.
Exactly here.
Like that, I mean, what I saw.
Yeah.
And if we can jump on this, even lightly, jump softly on this retract one of.
You're gonna draw. I'll draw my motion to update.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we need to do the heavy lifting right now.
Well, you've got two concepts right now. Full survey, the motion is, it'll be done in July. Then you have like an amendment to that saying, but let's do a mini review for oak wilt like as soon as we can. Is that, is that where you're going with this?
Yeah, yes. And, and identify the trees that have oak wilt or dead that need immediate attention.
And then what happens?
So then we turn it over to.
Every situation is different, so we have to evaluate it. Where is that? What conditions is in? Probably get in, if it's, you know, I'll probably bring in the actual arborist at that time. And so, and then we go from there.
So would it be helpful to know where these trees are?
Which trees? The oak wilt trees? If they're on city property?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, so you've got a motion to do the full survey in July or July against arborist. And then you've got the amendment, you start looking at oak wilt right now.
So I make a motion
Okay.
to do a preview of an inventory that involves visiting these areas to scout for oak wilt and defects that are killing the trees and return of a list of trees that need immediate attention to the city manager.
Okay, so you've got two motions. Okay, you need a second then, from someone. Zoom in one more second.
Does anyone want to say, oh, it's not that.
Okay, you have a second. Well, we need to, I guess, take these in order. And I don't mean to intrude, I'm just trying to keep it straight for speed. Okay, so you've got two concepts here, two motions. One, to postpone first survey or inventory until we, until the arborist comes on board, July, until the arborist comes on board. The other motion is let's do a mini review right now for oak wilt. So I guess let's do the first one, we want to postpone, you know, the big one. Take a vote on that. You want to do that, Iris? And then we'll come back and do a mini review, vote on that.
Yes, I was there with you hers about two minutes ago. Are you standing on that withdrawal?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're here, we're certainly on your one motion, girl.
Your motion. So does she have authority to withdraw it like that when it's already seconded? Okay, so my motion is that we do a mini review and scout for defects and oak wilt and, and the trees that need immediate assistance. And make a list and delay inventorying the rest of the trees until we can get an arborist, begin working immediately on the trees need.
And then here's your second, if you have a second.
Yes, I, I can, that is a question, whether we know how to identify them, yeah, among oak wilt.
Well, I mean, I think we can identify it. It's pretty identifiable. The problem is, the trees that you're identifying, I mean, how much do you know which, what, what those trees are? Are they red oats or are they live oats? You know, that, that sort of thing. That's something that would probably come down now. You're not looking at a tree. Jacob probably does.
Well, it should be on the inventory, but if you're going by the inventory.
Or they, I'm aware. Yeah, I know, I have that hanging in my garage.
So this is something that I had copied for birthday to go on a triangle. And it has the different trees in Texas, well, in this area, central Texas. And I'm looking to see, there's a live oak down there, and there's a red oak down here. And, and it, we thought we'd run. So, so I'm wondering if we, I think that's gonna be helpful.
No, I can find a, a oak wilt tree because the oak wilt trees are dead. Already, the trees that have oak wilt are already dead.
Well, some of my disregarding is, we don't really, but.
Yeah, they don't have, they may not be dead. I mean, they may just, sometimes they have leaves start changing and you know more about that. They don't just get oak wilt and die and say, hey, I mean, it's depressing.
There's possibly going to be evidence on the ground from previous years. And you'll be able to identify it through, through those, through those leaves on the ground. Possibly, I mean, of course, there's a mo crew that comes around and mulches everything up, so it could be, it could be difficult, but.
So I'm gonna suggest that could you answer your question? That we get some material, I mean, this is something that we had down here. And then there is Carl Block, lined up, but but to answer your question, yes.
Yes, Nancy.
I've got my, all right.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you.
So I'm, I'm gonna suggest that until we find a next meeting, we could actually create committees to start working on certain areas with a map. And in the meantime, get some information about how to identify the trees. Maybe you could help get that information, Nancy?
Where would I get that from?
Where would you get that?
There's a bunch of information on the Texas A and M website and that website that we referenced in our tree permit, the ISA website.
And Jacob, if you could give us the. And Jacob, if you could give us the app to identify SIP trees or defective trees or ailing trees?
Uh, the, the software?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I can, I can send you the one that and, uh, get you a login on that.
Then, then we have two arms there to take care of getting some information so that when we do go out, starting, if we start in, this is April, May sometime, then before it gets too, too hot, then just do a mini survey, not measuring trees, but just determining that. Then we'll have identifiers hopefully and, um, for the type of tree we're working with, and then also some information about how to detect an ailment tree. Okay? Is that all part of the motion?
No.
Okay, good. So, um, so.
I wish I would. To do a many review, many review inventory that involves visiting city property to scout for oak wilt and return with some trees that need immediate attention to Kevin Rule and delay a full inventory until the city arborist arrives.
Yes.
And then you had a suggestion to gather materials.
I can, what, what, what's the point of gathering materials? What, what, what's, what's that all about?
Well, you just said we don't know how to identify the oaks, so if you could go to the Texas.
I can send what I have.
Then.
I can send the information that I've already gathered and see if that's even helpful.
Yeah, if it's even helpful, then, that's, that's, that's the thing. The thing that would be most helpful, and I don't know if they do this anymore, probably not. But, um, you know, back in the old days, Texas Agri Life, we sent them average, um, you know, people from A and M to do that sort of thing, you know, to educate people that then. I mean, at that point, I had a mouth to turn, so that's why we did that. Talked about trenching, talked about, um, um, important things to do with, with, um, you know, with oak wilt. But I'm not sure that they did that anymore, you know, I don't know this.
So. Is the extension circus?
Yeah.
And the master gardeners have seen that information as well. So, but this is a good start. I don't know that Carl Blocky has video of anything that he's done, or he can bring it in, which is on the agenda. Um, so the idea is to get as much information so we can identify the trees. And, um, and I, I think that we can gather the information. Thank you.
Carl Blocky actually gave us the presentation when I was around town, I was first hired, and I can forward that to you.
Would you have that on oak wilt? That would be great.
Can I get a copy?
I was gonna email it to Iris and then she can just personally.
Eric, you gotta be my friend.
So, take a vote on that.
Yeah, so we do need a vote.
So, let's take a vote.
Yes, ma'am. Can you, Court Member Nancy Cotton, Cottonson, sorry? Yeah, remember McHale, right?
Yes.
Remember Cajun? Chair Rama?
Yes.
And remember Bernie Bussett?
Yeah. All right, so, um, next meeting we will, um, divvy out the committees and Suzanne and I started working on gathering information for each group of where to go and where the trees are. And so we'll be better prepared the next time actually break out the different groups. And, um, and maybe the armed with some information. Thank you all for that discussion. All right, so, I can run one. So number six, um, birthday. And I know that we voted, so I have number six's birthday. And I met with Brett and Mayor Lastville about what to do for the day. You know, it's gonna be a lot of volunteering, I think you've heard that. And what I suggested is that we just have a table with information. And that we set it up at. What is the, not the triangle, what is the other part of the freak site? Is it part, no, it's.
Brook, right?
The strip, brocolo and creek.
That's, that's triangle.
I thought the triangle was the other place.
Triangle's Blue Creek and Brocolo.
Yeah, okay, so that's where the hot dogs are gonna be.
Mm-hmm, and that's where we're gonna be, right?
Yeah.
We're gonna be.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
What time do you want us there, Kim, by the way?
Oh, it's, it's, it's whenever. I mean, I'm not gonna, you can do whatever. I've already told Iris that y'all can have the, um, canopy that we use for the.
Emergency.
Emergency fair and also that banner, and we'll put it down at the triangle and they can, y'all can sit underneath that and have your sample.
Tables and chairs.
Tables and chairs, yes.
And the canopy.
And the canopy and the, and the banner.
What's the best?
City of Wood Creek.
Oh, why can't we have one of them? So birthday, on twenty-four.
We'll have it made up.
It would be about ten feet long and it's about ten dollars a foot.
Okay, I could make one up, of course, we can.
Yeah, can be great, repurposing.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Go for it.
Let's bring this on anyway, we'll get a vote, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
Okay, okay, yeah.
So we're gonna have handouts and then we're gonna have cookies too.
Oh, great. So. So I, I have a triangle and I have some articles to copy that we can give away, away. I was hoping to get more of this.
I just got it delivered on Thursday, moved that under.
So if we could have some to give away, the idea is just a tree focused over the table with, for us. And, um, and I guess I should ask you, what do you want to put on the table?
What you have to put on the table?
Oh.
What about, what about, um, uh, hanging over the table at the front, your poster there?
I have a tripod.
Because I'm gonna just show this there.
This would be in the middle to identify trees.
Okay.
These will be on the side. And this one is a tree collection chart for central Texas. And this is planting your tree, pruning, mature, pruning, care of your tree. And the tree's that method for pruning. And so this will go on, try to hold it, if you can imagine, like that. And I was thinking it could sit on the table, that'd be some part of the table. And then handouts, we're gonna make handouts of these, smaller size, legal, legal size. Letter size, letter size, that people could take with them. And then other handouts that I have. Specifically. I remember that I am. Um, well, when, when you and I, Nancy, had talked about this.
Right.
That was something you seemed passionate about.
Well, the reason is, you know, that, that, um, central Texas, there's central Texas, and they're in central Texas, or grows in one part, perhaps in central Texas, but not necessarily the right thing, um, you know, trees, for instance. Um, also, there might be some interest in people knowing about replacement trees, which, but, you know, replace the trees that they lost with. Uh, and I think that that book is, you know, has some good information. What has some good, it has a lot of good information, and I'm sold on that book.
So, so the last time was both you were going to check out.
I did, I was gonna check out, um, copying those and, um, um, the, uh. You know, at, at the library here in Wimberly is, um, twenty cents a copy, uh, or color copy, twenty cents a copy.
I'm sorry to hear, again, um, have you checked out the button on the website that says tree care? There's a bunch of brochures and handouts that y'all could possibly use in your table in your, under oak wilt and, um, I'm looking at it right now. If I unplug my computer, it's gonna mess up the camera. But if you click on the tree information button, like you bring up the website, and it's on the bottom, it's on the right. When you open it, it's an oak wilt section, resident tree care, and then something for construction and tree care. But you might want to look at those, those two buttons, because there's, I put tons of brochures up there.
So I, I have started gathering some articles. This one is storm-related tree damage. This one is pruning mature trees. This one is mulch, your tree's best friend. This one is how do I care for my tree, mulching your tree. And so, um, of course, you know, the question that you were discussing right there was on copies. You know, we can find lots of material.
Yeah.
And I think it's up to all of us to do that. But what kind of, how much, what could we do about copies? Who's gonna pay?
Yes, because there, you know, I checked with ABC, I checked with UPS Store, I checked with the library in San Marcos. And the library here is, is, um, a twenty cents copy, copied, uh, here. And then it goes just up, up, up from there.
And that's color.
Uh, alright.
And that's color?
Yeah, color copy. And, uh, so what I was thinking, um, uh, is if we could copy some here. What do we say, six or eight pages? I'm thinking this book here. What, color copies, ten copies, uh, of, of, six pages?
Yeah, I think I wrote it down. And when we talked about six to eight, so there was four different sections of two pages.
Because of the expense, and, and I don't, you know, what I'm saying is could be copied here. What's our post?
Our post was, was what we, with the new project, I believe, was five hundred.
Colored? With color?
Of course, we don't either.
Well, there are six pages, three, six pages. And we want to figure ten copies would be enough, uh, because you've got a lot of information there, um.
These need to be copied as well.
Yeah, but I think you need to be a little more selective about some of that stuff, you know, on mulching and all that kind of stuff. Um, I think we, we just need to get out some basic information about trees and, and forget the.
So mulching, no, I disagree.
Okay.
Mulching is how we protect our trees. It hold, they hold water and they protect the trees from weeds and it holds moisture and it nourishes the tree. And we had a lot of damage because a lot of people haven't done that in the city, you know, the role.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, so I.
And they're saying that you shouldn't mulch, right?
Right.
Okay, lots of stuff out there in the big box stores that, you know, it's not a good idea to do now.
I have, I picked up so many copies that I shared about a year ago, uh, from the discovery, um, in San Marcos. They were so nice.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I picked up, and I think that's reused quite a bit of that. Um, you know, at Harvard, at Arbor Day, um, in the fall. I don't know if they would be, yeah, and there were several times we picked up, yeah, five copies, yeah, um, whatever. But they were very, very nice and there was no cost. Um, but it would take multiple trips, um, but I, I don't know if I have, we either do a lot of.
Why, can I make a suggestion? I don't know if we can do this, but instead of printing all this paper in color, why don't on your table have a QR code with whatever you want to do? So mulching has a QR code, so you take your phone, you go up there, you click the QR code, and it takes you to our website with that colored document on there, so you can read it or you can go home and print it on your own. But that way we don't have all this printing and nobody takes it and wasting all the trees. If we could just have all these little, you know, those little stands that you can put the one piece of paper in there and just have that QR code, they can, and we'll put all this on our website under the tree, um, what's it called?
Uh, tree information.
Tree information. If you provide us the, the, the ones that you want, we'll put them up on our website and they can click the QR code. And then we don't have to worry about.
Right, that easy, easy peasy.
Easy peasy.
And y'all can generate the QR code?
Yes.
Right.
Uh, yeah, yeah, about the same amount of time as, as copying and printing all those pages. We can make time. I mean, that's what we're here for, is to, um, support you, so, you know.
What are you talking about putting on a stand?
Oh, most of the, just call your, those clear, those clear stands that you put a piece of paper in and it can sit on the table?
Like the magazines in her life. He's going to get one.
And it can even happen.
So what if we each decided what we wanted to present on the.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, not like that. It's just a single one.
Same, single one?
Yes. Yeah, it has a little V at the bottom, has one, one, one piece of glass that's a letter size. And it's just the little fan that.
That'll hold a piece of paper and it has a QR code.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we have it here?
We can, we can get them.
Little small, you didn't share a QR code.
Well, you might want to say something like, uh, information on, you know, just print on one sheet, uh, information on mulching if you thought. You know, if you put, give us a thing, mulching, and you can just, oh, mulching, I wanna see what y'all got. You can, you know, you don't want to give out the whole show because you want somebody to click on it, so you just, mulching, click here, find out more information. And they can click on there and, and read it.
So if they're really interested, they'll follow.
Yeah, correct. And then if they go home and they can always get on our website, or, you know, it's, it's great to. Great thing about websites is you can put stuff up there and it costs you absolutely nothing and you can visit it anytime.
Is this a QR code?
That is a QR code.
You could put that whole book on there, I think. And you can have multiple QR codes in one sheet of paper.
Yeah.
The only thing about that is, is the book copyrighted.
No, uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
What, um, what I read here is.
It can't be reso.
For probably, but that's the only thing that I read.
I'm sure they want you to get online and, and read their book or what, I, I clicked on the QR codes, I don't know exactly where it goes to, but. Yeah, and you don't even have to put that book on there, you can just put a description of the book, and then have the QR code and let them decide if they wanna, if it sounds interesting and, and they'll like, oh, this looks like great.
I think that's a better idea.
That's a good idea.
So we need some stands, but we need to identify which articles we want.
If you, yes, give us, uh, Suz- Suzanne the articles that you would like. We will create the QR code and put them in stands for your meeting. We'll get those ready for you. And then we'll also, uh, put whatever you give us under the tab of tree.
Tree information.
Tree information. And so they will per- per- permanently have a link to whatever you give us.
Okay, so do we. Suzanne, should we have any of the handouts from the Arbor Day from my last time? I know these lots of coloring, we spent one last, and I don't know if there's anything left or not.
Um.
And it's fine if there's not.
Nothing really came through here. I know there was coloring pages, but for me, and.
Was it Deborah Hines and Chris Grimmerd who were in charge of the pages? Or Brett, Joe Monica did it.
Yeah, Mike did it.
Do you know who had the copies of handouts?
Are they? No, they aren't.
I think, I think that's the way I would.
So yeah, send us whatever you, whatever you want.
Do you have this book, Suzanne? Yes, ma'am. Okay. So if we sent you the pages, yes, ma'am, that's all you need to have.
We can just, what we'll do, we'll just use the QR code and it will go directly to that place.
So she's got, I'm not saying this, if I just emailed her and sent her the, the page numbers of what we want, um.
We would probably, no, what we'd do is just put the whole book on there, like it has their QR code.
Okay.
But, but in order to fill it off, we also just want a copy of page six to seven, eight to nine, ten to eleven. Um, it's divided, that's between small trees, large trees. Yeah, we were mailing the trees, but it is divided.
So you want that printed?
We'd like to have, well, we can have the book there. If we have the book, copy of the book.
Then you can say, hey, click this QR code and then you'll get the whole thing and you can look.
Through the book.
Through the book and it's, I mean, it's at the very front, so you don't have to go far. I was just, you know, that's what I would do is have the book there for them to look at. And then if they go home or like click it and save it on my phone, or once again, it will be on the website that they can bring up this whole book and look at it.
Yeah. And I think Wimberley Gardens has them for sale usually. I've seen them there for like two dollars. I think the book, why, not available. The Master Gardeners had some also, Suzanne, but doesn't have them right now. So I think they read pretty quickly. So, um, so it sounds like we all have different ideas about what we want them to have presented. So if it's my.
You got twelve days.
Right, yeah, right. That's, take comments on the S on here. That's long, darn.
So if we could, today is the tenth?
Yeah.
When do you need information from us about what we want copied?
By Friday.
This Friday?
Yes.
So that is the fourteenth?
Correct.
Okay, so I, uh, we're just thinking this year. So who is going to show up?
I'll show up. Karen, I can come help you set up over there.
Okay.
Just tell me when. Um, go ahead, I was.
Is there anybody else who wants to show up?
For?
Saturday and what, the mayor and I discussed with Brent with something like nine to one.
Since it's for the Arbor Day, I'm not Arbor Day, Arbor Day, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. I can, I can come out for a while.
Yeah.
That I want to come from nine to one.
I can, I can probably be there the whole time. It's just a walk from my house, so, uh.
So we'll need some setup?
Right. I hope Karen set up, um, tell me when.
He's gonna be volunteering somewhere.
No, no, I'm being volunteering at the.
Yeah.
He's cooking.
I am cooking, so I, I am protecting the triangle.
Without that.
No. And the triangle one and for all and.
We're three.
Yep.
Okay. And that's where we're having the, the, um, that is where this is going to take.
Correct. Y'all will be there in the afternoon. That, that's where everybody's gonna meet at eight thirty. And then they're gonna disperse, not you, but everybody, everybody else will disperse. And then they'll come back that afternoon after they do their Earth Day, um, projects throughout the city and we're gonna feed the hot dogs and stuff.
So we're kind of all over the place here. Um, so if we could think, we need from nine to one, maybe eight forty-five, twenty.
No.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Fifteenth is when we need whatever you want on the.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Okay, so we're meeting, uh, before nine, nine, everyone's gonna be there. I'll, I'll be there, eight forty-five. I can be there. Um, who else can be there?
I'll be there.
Okay. And anyone else that can join us, you can try.
I'll, I'll get the sign, who you want to get, like, on my phone and sign it too.
You can, uh, you can drop it off at my place anytime.
Where's, where's your?
Twenty-six, Wood Creek. Yeah. Send me a text. I'll give you my number in a minute.
Or you can bring it up here.
Or you want to bring it up here. Yeah, that's better. Yeah.
Okay.
So it's at the triangle. You guys are gonna work with staff on what documents you want, um, that you're gonna single out and they're gonna generate a QR code for that.
And what it stands for, then we'll, we'll have it with the teddy woolen chair and the canopy and the sign.
And do y'all want anything else? You want me to?
No, we don't have to.
No, all we have is a canopy and a canopy weights and a banner.
Who had the wooden table and chairs to permit the emergency thing?
You can borrow my, I have two six-foot white tables that I used to use when I was a girl.
Bring, can we have one of those?
We'll, we'll work on tables. We'll get tables and.
And that all is a nice place to sit for people.
Do what?
That tree that y'all have in the triangle. It is, that's a good spot.
And you can bring your own chairs too?
I'll bring a couple of chairs.
I'm gonna bring my own chairs.
Do we want anything else? We'll need to go eat, she being, get anything or?
I'll, I'll make cookies.
Okay, I'll need that.
That's on the first day, so I'm not sure I'll be here, but it won't.
You can bring the cookies up here and we'll take with our product.
Yeah. Like seal those up so they can't eat them all.
I, I did individually write up on my last time.
Oh, my God.
About how many are we talking about? I think what your generosity allows.
If I have time all night, all night thirty.
I did two fifty last.
Two hundred and seventy, yeah.
That's a lot.
Yeah, I, two hundred and fifty.
Wait, I don't need that. That's too much.
I'd say four dozen.
Yeah, that's much.
It. You could do two extra. But, yeah, um, when I was, oh.
Whatever we get is what we get.
Yeah. Butterfly, butterfly, because that's free. That's the.
That's on that, though.
I am lost.
Whatever, I can.
I like water.
Oh, you thought about cookies. Yeah.
Oh, no.
That might be a little hard to paint.
Or a little.
What did she say?
Unless she said.
But I suppose it'd be great. Okay, whatever your generosity says, we all, um, and then you're bringing a, I'd love to see that, a paper bag banner.
Yeah. I always did one for my kids' birthdays, you know, I was driving around with a board chair and it works fine.
Great. Okay.
It's good. Uh, it's still on. It's not our joke. It's not gonna be our joke if they're looking for our.
It's Earth Day, man.
I'm not your girl.
It's supposed to be too artistic. Perfect for Earth Day.
Yeah, and yeah, it's absolutely perfect.
So I'll bring information for, hit the deadline in to Suzanne by the fourteenth, Friday the fourteenth. Do you want to pull up in the running?
By four o'clock on Friday?
Soon as better.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as you can, but we'll, we'll probably start putting it together that Monday.
Is that the? Yes. And, and the racks for then. I was gifted a bunch of, um, seedlings, book seedlings, or completely, um, still had acorns on them. So I am going to pot them and I'll be bringing.
Really? Okay.
Boats. I believe they're lacy boats. I think. I think they're lacy boats.
There's all the German red oats. Right, all the oats.
Oh, well, I don't, I do have some live oats.
Well, they're soft bread.
But we're working, I'm taking these. I'm gonna take care of these and bring them. And then we can ask for identification from people who, uh, the children's just being seizures. I mean, you're talking about the. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't really have it.
Uh, okay, well, I was moving on, guys.
Yeah. Okay, so, so, uh, is there anything else that anybody wants to, when we're doing?
It's not pretty good, man.
All right, so if you could just tell me that we're all working on that.
Okay.
Something else.
Do you need me to bring water?
I think we're gonna get some of that if I talk to Mayor Rusko, uh, going to Costco for the hot dogs and cooler full of dreams.
Okay, all right. You let me know if anything.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, tell me when. I'll check in and we'll have it set up.
Okay.
We'll be ready.
So.
I don't want, you two.
In the spirit of Earth Day recycling, rather than giving a lot of individual drinks, if we get gots, I think those big.
Orange and white.
Yeah, the orange and white containers and just plastic cups and paper cups when people get thirsty, they can. And we did that for Arbor Day, but we used, um, you know, the, um, big book coolers that they kept there. And there were a bunch of cups from here. I don't know if they were used up.
Yes.
We don't have those coolers though, and I don't know, um, I mean, we gotta start bumping up against budget issues pretty quick. I mean, we've gotta go buy a couple of coolers. I mean, I'd say right now it's new individual and I'll take it to my house and recycle them. Yeah. If it's up, got the container, it's a block away. I, we just don't, I don't think we can go buy two coolers right now.
So if I ask Mayor, we could talk to Aqua Texas about installing the water fountain there?
Yeah, but not by the twenty-second.
That, that's a whole, uh.
That's an idea.
Yeah, that's, that's a big, uh, comprehensive because of the, the, the arts board and what we're doing at the triangle. It's all inclusive with that included. So, um, yeah, let's wait till we get that situated.
Can we get anything donated from Aqua Texas for Earth Day related to water?
They're, they're doing projects, I think, of either military or Veterans Park and/or the other park. If they're, that's in the works. We don't know exactly. I don't know what exactly they're doing. Um, twelve days out, it's gonna be hard to coordinate with that corporation getting specific donations for anything. You know, but they are gonna be involved in a different part of the city.
Oh, the only other thing that I can think of which would be nice, and I don't know whether it's a pub, they'll get a pub, is to have some nice gentle music, which kind of draws people a little bit. And I don't know, um, you know, how to do that.
We'll see what we can do. I'm not the best singer, but. I don't think, uh, yeah, we'll see if, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that would be nice because it kind of draws people. It draws, you know, work places.
You have a balloon box you can borrow and?
Uh, I do, but I don't, you know, it's, it's kind of back in the olden days.
That is amazing.
It's battery operated, I think. I think, I don't know, I can play it. I can see if I could get it working.
No, don't worry about that. We'll, we'll fare something, I can. I think I may have one, uh, but we'll see what we can do.
I just thought something nice that would kind of make people say, oh, I wonder what this is all about.
Well, people have a lot. I think more than that is just the canopy and our signs and your sign. I think that will, if they're driving down the street, that's what you're gonna see. You're not gonna hear the twinkling of the water walls or anything. You're gonna see that, say, oh, what are they doing? Well, you're in an Earth Day and that's what's gonna draw them in.
And the hot dogs.
And the hot dogs. You're gonna be up there grilling them. It's gonna be smelling good.
So would there be a forager on site to arrange tables? Cause I think.
Yeah, we're gonna set them over here.
We'll, we'll be, yeah.
We'll, we'll set up your tent. Yeah, we'll get it all set up.
Well, but the, I believe the Master Gardeners, Master Naturalists and Native Land Society would all be invited.
No, okay. They can set up, yeah.
Where they want.
I thought you wanted me.
Well, we'll have, we'll have an area. Um, I'm probably gonna grill on that back side. I'll have a little bit of, um, crosshairs. I'll have to go down there and see, but yeah, I'll come where I go. We'll put it all up in front on, on, um, it could be on Wood Creek Drive. Cause here's the triangle right here. There's a little bit of streams on the Brook Howell side. Uh, you know, the area in front, I think there's enough for like three tents. Cause I want people when they come down Wood Creek Drive the city, and then I'll be on that back side down there, I think.
Your sign, parking gonna go on? I mean, what are people?
Uh, they could park on the side of the triangle or hopefully they walk or ride their bike or whatever. There's a little bit of parking. You can park on the triangle. Hopefully though, they'll, it'll be walking or riding or whatever.
It'll all work out.
It'll all work out. It is what it is.
Okay, so I am looking for the next, okay, so.
With the, I'm sorry, Sharon, with the motion on this be that the tree board members give staff information for Earth Day by Friday, April fourteenth, and the tree board members will set up a tent. Do you have a plan?
There will be a motion for that.
There, any of them?
No, no, that's just the ministry.
Okay.
No, they don't have to tell us. We got it.
Okay, so should we move on to Suzanne? Everybody, thank you all for all these views. Especially for what we see. Okay.
There you go.
We've got a, oh, soundbar, and I think it's battery operated.
And then you can control it from the phone with the handle.
That would be great. So put you down there. All right, so then, um, thank you all for coming along. Um, number seven is, lastly, take possible action regarding scheduling a citywide meeting with Carl Rocky. Yes, he's doing Earth World's breakfast. So this action was postponed. Um, and it was brought out, we, it was approved to do it. And I know that while you were gone, I believe you were gone, but when, um, Carl was reaching out to you, were you able to reconnect? No, I, I, you weren't going to. No, I kept in touch. Okay. I think I wrote him and told him I was gone. Yeah, that's what I did, yeah. And I didn't hear from him at all. Okay. So if you would, please reach out to him so we can schedule. He wanted to know about when we wanted to do it. And I understood, or, well, I didn't have the minutes, but I think you, you know, the minutes. Or we talked about it when you were, you were going to. When we wanted to have it happen. Was it beginning of September?
I think y'all decided it would be determined on his availability.
On his availability. And I think I did send him that.
His response was about when you look, if I remember, you know, what's the general time period? So do y'all wanna give him a, the general time period, fall or, uh, when is Arbor Day this year?
Yeah, November.
Do y'all wanna do it Arbor Day? Um, but I think he was just looking for a general time so he could look at his calendar.
Okay, so, um. If you said what times or dates of the week are, well, we're just, that was March twentieth. And then you responded that I was gone. So, um. Didn't I say also something? You said, um, I was also on the tree board responding to me. Um, uh, your availability is the main question. Yes, ideally a meeting during the Saturday with J. White would be wonderful. But that, baby said, we'd also like it to be convened for you. Um, and then when I returned, I, I returned last week and I just don't get in touch with them. That's okay. So it's basically, he's kind of open. We need to respond with some kind of a, an idea. So will you continue with your pursuit of what we're just saying?
I was saying, I think he's gonna need to sort of know when we're looking and then get on his calendar. So if y'all have an idea when you want to have it come.
September?
Okay.
I mean, that's what comes to my mind. I'm thinking dates of the week for a time, or, cause he'll probably need something more than just the month of September. So what is a good day for the city to sponsor an event, a city-wide? So what is a big day for the city to sponsor an event, a citywide event? Would it be Saturday?
So that, uh, what we, gonna, where are we gonna do it, are we gonna do it up here, or? Do we know where we're gonna hold the event?
Remember, Cotton said that she and Miss Number Cajun said that they like the hands-on approach, that she did at Blue Hole.
Okay, yeah, so we don't have to worry about a venue issue, because we're, we're gonna do it somewhere around city then, right?
So that people can see.
Okay.
Yes.
Somebody's back there.
I'm wondering, oh. So, do you wanna ask him about location as well, about the venue, if he wants to do a similar presentation to what we heard at Blue Hole? Is that, is that a, for the city, okay, cause I think that was, um, registration required by Blue Hole.
Right.
To, to do that event, and I don't know how they handle their registration.
And who is it gonna be for?
Carl Flocke.
Yeah, no. Yeah, no, I mean, who's gonna, who are they wanting to attend, who's attending?
It's open to the city. It's sponsored by the tree board.
Okay, and, um, and, and might you wanna do, might, might you think about doing that, so, in September? Okay, what about thinking about maybe, um, having a walking tour?
That's similar to what we did at.
Yeah, that's, yeah. But it would be easier walking tour than doing it at Blue Hole, right?
Oh, right, it would be sheer, but compared to what he did.
Yeah.
There, which he took us around, but I don't know where people would park, or, I mean, if you parked here. I, I don't know. The hot spots. Or whatever, Stone House. So, you've been critical.
Yeah, it's probably, probably, um, except for the little line on there, um, you know, can't be walking around through his backyard. I was sitting.
So you might ask him where, where did he, Wood Creek? Do you have any?
You have him check out the, the parks.
Yeah, the parks.
Well, who wants that property across from the golf course on Wood Creek Drive? Um, there's a big parking lot over there.
The golf, the golf.
There's other golf courses.
Can we go to that golf course?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, lots of parking. Probably not, they don't like, almost with golfers on there, if you have a group of people, especially on Saturday. They normally have tournaments, and so they wouldn't want a bunch of people walking on the golf course while they're playing golf, that would not be.
Complaining to.
Yeah.
I was just thinking about parking.
Yeah.
I think.
Okay, so the.
Just, just you.
Two spots. Yeah, really, there's nowhere for parking, so.
Yeah, I mean, we have to, I mean, what we've done before with some events is, uh, you know, even park here and rent people with golf courts to, to somewhere, but, uh, I, I don't know where, I mean, I think the idea of one of the parks is probably a good idea, some of the parks have, I don't know if that was parking, um, I don't know.
The guy said they can park on those two spaces and along the road, and you can use the front of my property too.
Which, which park?
I guess.
Yeah, that's up there.
So, uh, I think the question is where I see all the. That we can not.
Everywhere.
I think you, uh, I mean, uh, if it was me, I would, I would talk with Carl first.
Yeah.
And then determine the location and logistics, but I would get a date and kind of his feeling, cause he knows Wood Creek pretty well, he would be able to give you some just suggestions on maybe what to do. And so before making plans, we'll start talking to him, I think would be premature.
Yeah.
And so get with him, get a date, let him kind of tell you what he thinks, cause he's a, he's a good guy. You know what I mean, he'll, he'll say, okay, I think this, this, and this.
Does he have a blocky block?
I don't know what, but. Yeah, I would, he's the expert, he's done these presentations probably more than he cares, well, but, you know, he can probably do it even in his sleep, and so he can give you a lot of information and just take whatever he tells you.
So what we're looking at then is that, uh, you're gonna talk to Carl and, and look at dates in September, preferably a Saturday, is that right? Okay, and then, uh, get feedback from him as to where we'd be doing it at Wood Creek. Is that what y'all are saying?
And then if there would be a walking tour.
Right. Okay, so.
So Dave, then you walk into.
Mm-hmm. So if y'all are, if you're heading that way, then well, someone needs to turn that to a motion.
And how to advertise, and they need to get his information, you know, like who he is and his bio, so we can do like that, registration for it. And, um, who his audience will be, I think that's a good question. We're like everyday Wood Creekers.
I think, I, you know, once again, I'm not telling y'all what to do, but I think it'd be, you know, anybody in Wood Creek or, or even the valley, um, you know, cause close proximity, you know, um, just can't, yeah, really.
Yeah, it's nice to be there.
Yeah. To what?
It's nice to be there, really.
Yes, it is, and you know, hey, this is the great information to just get out to anybody in the area, so I would hate to just, you know, we want the Wood Creek residents, but it doesn't cost us anything, we might as well hell invite as many people out to get the education.
Right.
I mean, that probably wouldn't be our focus, but yeah, anybody could come.
He may have a limit on how many people, I mean, we, we went and there were, what, about thirty people there, but, and sometimes it was hard to hear him. Nobody was slumping into hear what he had to say.
Yeah, and then once again, you know, that, that goes back to talking to him, getting what he said, I think he knows a lot more than I do, so, I'm just, so.
Okay, so, will you contact him again, just follow or just checking information for the next meeting? We have it, thank you. I mean, your motion.
I don't think so, I mean, you can just get some information and bring it back and we'll put it off for the next meeting.
Yeah, that's a difficult question. Um, all right, so, the next item is to discuss and take possible action on the open tree board position, the vice chair. Last meeting, we agreed to postpone it. Here we are, I'm bringing it up.
In the last meeting, we asked every board member to inquire within their circle of friends, anybody who might be interested, but the city won't get to receive any application.
Oh. We're looking for a vice chair, we can't appoint people to, to count this tree board, but we, we can only appoint for among ourselves, vote for the chair and vice chair, I think.
So this is voting for the vice chair of the committee?
That's right, yeah, it's the open tree board position, which is vice chair.
Do you have any recommendations to your board as to who you want to be vice president?
I do, but I, uh, don't wanna put somebody on the spot, I don't wanna be on it. But I, I mean, I could just say who I'd like or who I recommend, does anybody have a recommendation? They'd like to nominate, I nominate Dorothy, oh.
Yay!
Your last.
It's not very.
Well, that's just, I'm not dying, I'm here, you know, I have a little, uh, what do they call it? Um, it's something to, long COVID, that's what it has to be called. And fatigue, but I'm here, and I came up with an agenda, so.
I know you do so much, yeah.
Well, you know, you know, this position is not about taking over my position, it's just about supporting the, the board if I'm not here or can't be here for some reason. But I will probably give whoever is vice chair, if I have to be gone, but I have an agenda. And Suzanne is really helpful too, and Brent, and Kevin.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm very helpful.
And some of you offer things as well, you know, so it's not just one person, we are the board.
I think what she's asking is, correct me if I'm wrong, really, it would just be in case she wasn't here because she went somewhere, he would have to sit in her chair in one of the meetings, is really all she's. And pound the air, is all she's really asking, and so, the time limit would be minimal till none. Well, yes, I know. I understand, and you can always decline it too, you can say, no, thank you, and we can think and nominate somebody else.
A lot of qualities that are so helpful. See how it's important to refrain. I retract, I take your shape. Okay, then, um, we need a motion to delay this again?
Is there anything wrong or not having a vice, um?
Yeah, because if, if she, uh, you said, here's the chemical needs, you know?
Yeah, okay, I understand that, but why, why can't, why can't somebody just step up to the plate?
Presidio.
It's, it's a figure, I mean, it's basically, it's one of those. It's a figurehead, I'm not a figurehead, but you know what I mean, it's kind of one of those things you have to have that probably won't ever come up with you, I have to have it. You know, it's, so. Yeah.
I don't know protocol.
Yeah.
But I think she has protocol, and it's decorum, and it's just in case. And, I don't wanna push you.
If you got it, you can only wear procedure. But let's say that Dorothy declines, and, and the next person she selects declines, and, and down along everybody declines, then what do you do?
Well, wait, 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 um, let's clarify something.
Okay.
Um, I don't select, all I do is make a nomination, just like any of you can do.
All right, I just, we're four chairs and fours, and, and, you know.
I just, I don't want that on the record, that I'm selecting.
You're not re, you're not recording?
No, yeah, no, there, there goes.
Yeah, it's not my job to select.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, it's, it's okay, I just wanted to clarify that, in case anybody looks at these minutes.
I'm watching her.
Thank you.
You might go down. Just, you know, I have a million questions, um.
Which is good.
You know, I've, I've never done this sort of thing, any, where it's kind of their formality to, except a lot of them.
It's a formality, let me say, it's a formality for the vice chair, I'll put it, that's, that's a good. It means very little, but it does mean a lot.
Yeah.
Which is a lot, which is a lot of, you know, just.
Yeah, it's a lot of, yeah, okay.
It means a lot, but does very little.
Okay. So, uh, do we need a motion to postpone?
No.
No. Nobody, nobody did it, so there's no motion.
I'll be in touch with you next meeting. That would be great, I'll listen to you very carefully without pushing. I haven't pushed, I promised I wouldn't push for two months, I haven't pushed. Hard to remember areas. All right, so I, um, think that is all. And are there, is there any, the next meeting date is May eighth at four thirty?
We'll roll in together.
Oh, yes, the next board meeting is. Do you wanna meet in formally before Earth Day? I think.
No, I think she timed up Earth Day.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
So the next tree board meeting is May eighth at four thirty here, please remember to bring a laptop, a copy of the current agenda you can. And I guess we have a deadline of the fourteenth to get information to me. Thank you very much, Suzanne. Everybody, we're ready. Yeah, and so. That's your.
There you go.
I forty-five.
You've got a lot to.